Ms. Higa?
Here.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Here.
Ms. Hendricks?
Here.
Mr. Keely?
Here.
Ms. Vargas?
Here.
And for the Director of Finance, Ms. Wong Hernandez?
Here.
Chairperson Dillon, you have a quorum.
Thanks very much. Before we get into it, we'd like to congratulate Betty on her reelection.
I think you were the leading vote getter.
Woo-hoo! Leading vote getter in the state. Very cool.
More votes than anyone else.
Very cool. Very cool. So, bear with me. Not only are we getting to start early, and I know it was difficult to tell from our materials, but we had planned to split the board meeting between two days. And we have some speakers that'll be here tomorrow. I see Amy just coming in. She was up at 11:00 this morning flying in from Denver. So, I want to tell you what I'd like to do with the agenda, and then I'd entertain a motion to approve it as amended, or with flexibility, because who knows? We might have to change some stuff up again. And I'm hoping we can get most of our work done today. So, because we get to start a little bit early, what I'd like to do is move Items 8 and 10 to the beginning of our agenda. Then, we will go into closed session, and we will do Items 11, 12, and 13 during closed session. And then, we will turn, and then, we will do the... The... I'm sorry. I should've just gonna say what it was. We would do the... That's Audits and Wrecks Management. No wonder why I can't find what I'm looking for. We would do the building, or the expansion project. So, we would have our vote on the expansion project. And that's a couple hours. So, I wanted to make sure that we were not splitting that discussion, and that we would have ample time to do that. So, tomorrow, we would start, and hopefully, the only things that we will have left on our agenda would be John Stanton's presentation. I'm not sure what number that is. And the board evaluation. So, maybe we can have a late start Friday. Let's see. All righty. So, I'd entertain a motion.
So, yeah, a motion to approve the agenda, Dana, with...
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any comments on how we plan to proceed? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Okay. We've approved our agenda with flexibility. So, the first item on our agenda is the agenda. And we've done that. So, let's go to... Let's go straight to Item 10.
You said 8 and 10.
I'm sorry. Item 8. So, you guys are gonna have to stay on top of me now that we moved so much stuff around. I was all ready to go, and then, the speed up. Paul threw me off. It's all Paul's fault. And now, I can't even find my old agenda. There we go. Okay. Item 8. Item 8, Julie. Thank you very much for coming up.
Thank you.
This is the statement... Financial Statement Review.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Julie Underwood. I'm Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here today with Art Martinez. He's our Director of Financial Planning and Reporting. And Banki Fatunla, he is our Senior Financial Reporting Manager. And we're here today to provide you with highlights of the 2018 Basic Financial Statements for the year ending June 30, 2018. And so, for your reference, a copy of the Basic Financial Statements is found in your documents on Pages Arm 16. And so, the highlights we'd like to review with you today are the changes in our fiduciary net position, changes in our net position and net OPEB liabilities, as well as some various accounting provisions that have more material implications to our financial statements. So, Art's gonna start with our changes in our fiduciary net position.
So, good morning. So, with regards to the fiduciary net position, I'm gonna go over the more significant changes that occurred over this last year compared to the prior fiscal year. So, for those of you that aren't familiar with the Statement of Fiduciary Net Position, it's very similar to a balance sheet. It provides information with regards to our assets and our liabilities, and also on the overall net position, which some would equate to a fund balance. So, with regards to the investment asset line item, it increased about 8% over the prior fiscal year, and that was primarily driven by the positive investment returns this last fiscal year of 9%. The cash balance decreased over the prior fiscal year by approximately 67%. And that's really the result of a timing difference associated with when we remitted our state and federal taxes that we withheld from our benefit payments. So, in the prior fiscal year, those were still outstanding. At the end of the fiscal year, we hadn't remitted them yet, whereas this last fiscal year, we remitted those before the fiscal year ended. Therefore, there's a lower cash balance. Our net pension and OPEB liabilities increased quite a bit this last fiscal year, the line item did, and that's primarily because of our implementation of GASB 75, which required us to report our proportionate share of the state's net pension, or net OPEB obligation on our financial statements. And then, our fiduciary net position increased overall, and again, that's primarily driven by the positive investment returns, along with the increase in contributions netted out with the benefit payments. So, moving on to the Statement of Changes in Fiduciary Net Position. So, I'll go over some of the significant changes in that financial statement as well. For those of you that aren't familiar with that statement, it's very similar to an income statement. It provides information on our revenues and our expenses, which makes up the changes in the overall net position of the organization. So, the net investment income, although it had a positive increase this year, it was actually lower than it was in a prior fiscal year. So, we saw an overall decrease in net investment income of 26%. And again, that's primarily because prior fiscal year, we had a 13% return compared to a 9% return this year. Member and employer state contributions increased by approximately 11%, and that's attributable to the increase in the contribution raise, along with a slight increase in credible compensation. And the benefit expenses increased by 5%. And this is consistent year over year. This is generally what we would expect with the benefit expenses. They generally increase about 4% to 5% each year. And then, the administrative expenses, the increase there is associated with salaries and benefit increases. In addition to that, because of the implementation of the GASB 75, we also had an increase in the overall OPEB expense that we had to recognize this current fiscal year. So, now, I'm gonna move on to our implementation of Statement Number 75. So, the auditors had touched upon this a little bit in their previous presentation. So, this last fiscal year, we implemented GASB 75. That dealt with the financial accounting and reporting of the OPEB plans. And so, as part of our implementation, we had to actually book our proportionate share of the state's net OPEB liability onto our financial statements. And that was quite a large liability, given the fact that the state's plan is essentially unfunded. So, if you look at the chart that's up there right now, you can see that historically, we've always had an OPEB liability. And then, you see in this last fiscal year, it jumps up quite a bit. And that's really a result of the change in the accounting standards. So, under the old accounting standards, under GASB 45, we still reported an OPEB liability. But that liability was really the difference between what was actually required to be contributed versus what the state actually contributed. And so, it never contributed to ARC, so there was always a small portion of liability that we would have to reflect on our financial statements for the amount that the state didn't contribute. This year, under 75, we actually have to report our proportionate share of the overall net OPEB liability, which is a larger amount, given the state's funded status of that plan. As part of our implementation, we had to restate the beginning net position or the beginning fund balances, and that was to account for the accumulated impact of GASB 75 on the prior fiscal years. So, rather than going back and restating each fiscal year's financial statements, we just look at the cumulative impact of 75 in those fiscal years, then book the adjustment to the beginning fund balance, which is, you know, a standard procedure under the accounting guidance. And then, we also made some limited note disclosures with regards to our implementation. And then, finally, GASB 75 resulted in an increase in the deficit balances for the MPP program and the Teachers Deferred Comp Fund. Those two programs, over the last couple of years, have had negative net positions or fund balances because of the accounting standards under GASB 68 and 75, which required us to report, you know, our proportionate share of the pension liability and these OPEB liabilities. So, even though they have deficit positions, it doesn't impact the financial viability of the programs or their ability to, you know, conduct business on an ongoing basis, because these liabilities really reflect the long-term liability that's posted for financial reporting purposes, and they don't have a cash impact per se. So, the programs have sufficient resources to continue operations for the foreseeable future. So, with that said, if there aren't any questions, I will hand it off to Banki.
All right. Thank you, Art. So, this slide presents information on the net pension liability of employers of the state teachers retirement plan and the state of California. So, as you see on the graph, it shows kind of a trend of the total pension liability, the fiduciary net position, and the net pension liability, ranging from fiscal year 13, 14, when GASB 67 was implemented, through fiscal year 17, 18. The liability is measured based on GASB 67, and, you know, one thing to note is that although we reported in our notes on financial statements, we don't actually report this on our balance sheet, so we don't carry these liabilities. Each employer and the state of California is required to report their proportionate share of these liabilities. So, as of June 30, 2018, the net pension liability was $91.9 billion, and that is a... That decreased approximately $600 million from the prior year. And the reason for that decrease was the increase in our fiduciary net position, which outpaced the growth in the total pension liability. So, the net OPEB liability of employers relates to the MPP program, and is measured based on GASB 74. The MPP program, or the Medicare Premium Payments Program, is... Provides retiree health benefits to CalSTRS members, specifically provides the payment for the payment of Medicare Part A and Medicare Part A and B and late enrollment surcharges. One thing to note is that this plan is a closed plan. And so, the liability, the total net OPEB liability of employers as of June 30, 2018, was $382.8 million. So, as you look at the slide, one thing you note is that the net OPEB liability is essentially equal to the total OPEB liability. And the reason for this is that the plan... It's because of the way the plan is funded. The plan is essentially unfunded, unfunded, and has limited assets within the plan. It's funded on a pay-as-you-go basis whereby the benefits are funded as they become due. So, we retain very limited resources... Assets within the plan. You'll note that the liability decreased from the prior year. It decreased approximately $39 million. And the reason for that decrease is partially because the plan is closed, so there are no new entrants, or very limited new entrants into the plan. But also, there were some favorable differences between actuarial assumptions and the actual experience that occurred during the measurement period. So, GASB 67 requires us to report the money-weighted return on plan investments of the state teachers retirement plan. That... The month... The return for fiscal year 17, 18 was 8.9%. So, just a few things to note about the money-weighted return is that it measures the internal rate of return on plan pension, pension plan assets, and it's net of pension plan investment fees. It takes into account some... The changes in cash flow, things such as benefit payments and contributions received. And it's based on financial information. It's based on the information within our balance sheet and our income statement. It's different from the time-weighted return, which is reported or... Which is reported by the investment branch, and that measure the time-weighted rate of return. It reflects the... It's a measure of the performance of the investment portfolio, and is distinct from this return. So, this slide discusses the Senate Bill 84. Just... And this has been mentioned quite a bit in past meetings, but just to refresh, it's based on new legislation, SB 84, which was enacted last... In 2017, and it required the state of California to make supplementary retirement contributions to CalSTRS, you know, for a total of $6 billion. And that supplementary contribution by the state was... It was funded by a loan from the surplus money investment fund of the Smith, which is administered by the state treasurer. What this slide reflects is really what our account... What the accounting implications and how we reported this. So, we reported CalSTRS' full proportionate share of that liability as of June 30, 2018, which is estimated to be about $35.7 million. The liability is expected to be repaid over 12 years and will be fully paid by June 30, And now, Julie will walk through some of the upcoming changes.
Yes, so, looking forward to the next financial statements. Fortunately, there's no new major GASB standards that we need to implement, so we're really happy about that.[946.66][946.66](laughter) And then, depending on the board's decision on the long-term space planning, there is a standard coming up, Statement 88, for debt disclosures that we'll be taking a look at, depending on what the board's decision is. Now, as detailed in the Arm Committee this morning, our external auditor, Crowe, did issue an unmodified audit opinion on our financial statements. So, there were no significant deficiencies identified, no material weaknesses. So, we're very, very happy about that audit report. We also wanted to notify you that our 16, 17 CAFR and PAFR both won their respective awards from the Government Finance Officers Association. Now, those accomplishments just would not be possible without the dedication and teamwork of CalSTRS staff, and I wanted to offer my sincere appreciation for their hard work and dedication to this organization and its success. So, we wanted to leave you today with a summary, a one-page takeaway that you could take with you, of some of the information that we've talked to you about today, as well as some additional data on our membership, benefits paid, and contributions received. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? You've explained it very well, Julie, and you guys too. Thanks, Art and Michael. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Item 10. Pension Solution Update. Graham, thanks for being in the audience when we put you up early. Good morning.
So, today, we will provide you a very comprehensive overview of the status of the project. But before we'll start, I think we would like to thank you for your interest and support in the project. We saw that one into the, you know... We just gave you the demo. Few of you were there, and I wish you all were there, but I think I understood, you know, the time commitment at all. Yeah, but I think it's just very helpful to staff, because you asked some pinpoint questions. Paul, Jacqueline, and Karen, especially Karen, is, you know, because she's in system, she asked some question, which is, you know, how we can respond to the member and all. So, it's very helpful to all of us. So, we will start. So, this is our DNA, kind of, why we're doing the project, and I think we're just going over every project meeting. I think maybe, Andrew, if you can explain a little bit why... What's the benefit we are getting out of this?
Yes, absolutely. And as those of you who were able to attend the demo yesterday saw, these pension system objectives are literally posters that we put up in our design workroom, so that everyone working on the project can see the drivers and what we are working toward. So, in terms of, you know, that first box on the upper left, we're really focused on increasing the ability to see the work that we have for our staff in terms of their items and status. This will also... Our new system will also allow us to provide greater consistency in the data that we deliver. And then, in terms of enhancing services, I think one of the main benefits that we saw yesterday, or I'm sorry, in the demo on Tuesday, was the increased visibility of work items for employers that will increase efficiencies, not only on our side, but also for the employers who report data into us. In regards to the long-term operational efficiencies, the accuracy of reporting and system processing through business rules is something that will help us tremendously improve the consistency of the quality of the data that we have. We will also be able to improve our workload management and reduce duplicate data entry. Finally, with our internal controls, another great function of our new system is the audit tracking log. That is something that will allow us to see who has been doing what on every single screen and transaction. And finally, our system is role-based in terms of the access that staff have. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. So, this is our typical agenda. We'll go over all the rollouts. Functional rollout 1. We'll talk about functional rollout 2, where we are in the project. We'll talk about our challenges and mitigation, and the metrics and next step. And we'll take the turn. Andrew and I will take the turn. Any question you have, please feel free to ask.
Okay. Thank you. So, Functional rollout 1, soft launch for employer readiness. Our design activities are on schedule, development activities as well, and our detailed test planning activities are underway. This is something that's going... The test activities are something that's going to demonstrate to us how well the system is working, how well the employers are able to use the functionality, and is something that a lot of people are gonna be spending quite a bit of time on in the coming months. And finally, we are also focused on our soft launch training plan, both for the employers externally, as well as for our internal users. You've heard us talk about the employer readiness assessments. So, what these are, we have a set of activities that we will be deploying over the next three months, and we'll be contacting 111 different employers who report to us directly one way, shape, or form. And these assessments will help us ascertain how prepared the employers are for the system changes they may need to make, and also, what kind of support they may need from CalSTRS as we go through this process. And that includes sort of when they'll be ready to adopt the new file format, or if that's going to be potentially a challenge for them, and then, we can figure out what support activities we may need to develop. I also want to draw your attention to the new file format and file layout plus. As with these large system implementations, it's a whole new vocabulary. And so, the new file format refers to the file specifications and the actual fields and values that the employers will be reporting, using to report data. File layout plus is something that we will be... It's a document that we're delivering them during these assessments. So, it has the high-level business rules, so the employers are able to see what kinds of changes they may need to make to their own systems in order to report to us with the new file format. And then, finally, the new file format regulatory changes. We'll have an item on that process for you later today.
So, if I have a question about rollout where employers are actually starting to implement some of the format, are you gonna talk about that later, or would that be appropriate now?
Yeah, that's a great question for right now. So, the employers are not yet embarking on these efforts. One of the things... One of the points I'd like to make is that employers will still be able to report on the old file format if that is necessary for them. We have a process designed to allow for that. As a result of these assessments, the employers will now have the high-level business rules that we're going to be asking of them. So, they can start to make those changes beginning in as early as beginning of next year.
Are we going to be doing... Are we gonna take any... Like, a select group of our reporters and start working with them? We did a different... So, CTA at one time did a different due structure, and we asked for volunteers, and chapters volunteered, and we asked some really big chapters that were gonna implement it to volunteer early. So, as they worked through the process, we were able to work out any bugs and things like that. Are we gonna do anything in a similar fashion with these, with some of our reporters?
That is exactly what we plan to do.
And I thought you might've said that, but I couldn't remember.
Sure. We've identified cohorts of employers, and this assessment process will help us identify which of the employers are ready to go right away, and we can start working with them.
So, I guess that kind of goes to my point. I mean, there might be some... So, I'm looking at the districts that report to us, not the county offices. And I think the county offices are gonna have... And I don't wanna say their own issues, but they're gonna have issues that'll be pertinent to them. But there's gonna be some large districts like LAUSD that might need some extra help. And I guess what I don't want to have happen for them is as they move into this new file format, that they don't find themselves in the same position they did when they were reporting to us after they did their new payroll software stuff.
Yeah, I didn't remember that well.
And so, I want to...
Yes, absolutely.
You understand what I'm asking you?
I do. And I have some good news for you. Our very first assessment was conducted yesterday with LAUSD. And so, we are in the process of gathering information, you know, sort of what they have reported to us in terms of what their potential concerns may be, so that we're able to work with them to address those and make sure that they're successful.
Super. Thanks. We learned our lesson out of that, too, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. Cassandra?
The other thing, when speaking to CGI executives, they were... They're really wanting to assist us in this process as well, and they are actually the payroll owners of some of the software that they're using, so for the big county offices. So, they have advantages as the customized software product that they're using, and it's CGI. So, they think that they might be able to assist us in that process as well.
Well, that's very good.
For a good part of them.
Very good. Karen also has a question.
Yes, thanks. I might've missed this when you said it, but is it... Is the conversion to the new file format a mandatory program that they have... That the districts have to do? Or is it... Is it just eventually they'll get... They can do it?
Ultimately, it will be mandatory. However, we know that not all districts are gonna be ready at the same point in time. So, your statement about eventually everyone will get there is really what we're working toward. So, there won't be a hard and fast date as of go-live for our functional rollout 2, where every single person has to be ready. There's going to be a process through which the districts or county offices of education that are not yet ready to report on the new file format can go through in order to continue reporting on the old file format.
And that's what the soft launch is really all about. It's that two-year ramp up for them to go live at... For them to get ready and prepared to work, actually, in the live environment. So, they'll have that long of a period of time.
And then, CalSTRS does recognize that some of the districts are not technology updated as much as they need to be, and so, those things have been dealt with. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome.
So, let's talk about data conversion. I think I'm very happy... We all are very happy to give you this update, that we are moving along. There is a great progress we made so far, but I just want to give you some context. I think a lot of projects failed because of the data, because the quality of data is not there, and in the end, when we are using the product, then nobody's trusting the data. So, what we did is a three-pronged approach we took. I think you heard that in the past, we always reported out data prep project. So, what the project did, and doing, still doing, we are prepping the data, and where the holes are. If there is some issues in the data, we have a focus group, look at that one, look at the business rule, and advise that how we will use that one. And we have a team, we convert the data. And then, we have another team, we validate the data. So, it's just like, is look on paper looks... This is a very simple, tacky-tack kind of conversion, but it's a lot of behind-the-scenes happening, not happening just now, started years ago. So, I think that lesson learned, the thoughtfulness, the team, it's a lot of people working in there. We don't thank that much to them, but I think it's a lot of heart and soul in that process. And we're very happy... Just give you another context. We converted like 300 million lines, and the fallout is only 0.1%. So, you just thought, I mean, it's just a humongous task, and team is working very hard in there. So, we are very happy, and I thought maybe it's a quality product. Harry always, always talk about the quality. I think we... The data, if we trust the data, I think everybody, the members, will be happy, and we can respond to the member in a timely manner.
And one of the examples I like... And one of the examples I like to give, just to sort of demonstrate how complicated and deep our data is, if you can imagine a member who starts with us as an educator at age 25, works for 40 years, retires at 65, and they have a retirement, say, for another 30 years. And so there's 70 years of a relationship right there. And if they have an option beneficiary, that can be well over 100 years with a single person. And then you multiply that by a million members, and you get to Ashish's 300 million lines of data. So our functional rollout two, the second demonstration of Benefit Connect was held on October 26th. You can see some of the content that we demonstrated. That went well, as did our first demonstration. Again, a few minor defects were noted. The teams are working on addressing those, and the preliminary participant feedback was favorable. And again, the benefits to these early demonstrations, it's akin to early testing. So we get a visibility in terms of a window into what some of the challenges may be, as well as increased confidence from various individuals in the building who are working on the system. That is something that we've definitely seen as a result of both of that demonstration on the 26th, as well as the demonstration that we held on Tuesday of this week. So for our second functional rollout, in terms of the design and the development activities, we are pretty much complete with designing FR2. We have, we have finished with some, with all of the functional design. We still have operational report, design work that is ongoing, and the development is proceeding according to schedule. We also are sending some of our independent verification and validation team to the offshore facilities to inspect the development as it's ongoing. So we'll have additional information from the independent validation and verification team.
This is another area, the testing area. I think we're giving the demo, and you saw that demo, we're giving this tougher demo. But I just want to clarify that the demo doesn't mean that we're done. There's a long road ahead. Whatever you saw, is this a subset of the one business process we provided to you? So the next slide, we'll talk about, you know, what comprehensive testing we will be doing. But it's just testing is the piece, and Graham, our IPAC and all, we just talk about, we jump into the testing. Design done, development is happening, and testing is very critical for, from the technical perspective, as well as the overall business process perspective. And so far, we are on plan. And this, we just throw it so much in this slide, but just give you the context, the contract acceptance testing CGI will be doing, they will be doing, and this is just not like one-month or two-month effort. This is a 14-month effort. So you can see that we're not just shortcutting our, the lesson learned from the other pension plans and all, that testing is very important for this scale of the project. So 14 months they will be doing, we'll be supporting them. This is not a black box for us. We will be finding whatever the errors are. And then when we'll go, there is very much in the contract, as well as we had a discussion with CGI, what is the exit criteria when we move forward from the CATS to the UAT? And that's the, Paul asked this question, how confident you are when, you know, in the project. I think the CAT will give some confidence level, but the UAT will be the ultimate when we will say that yes, we are 100% confident that it will tested out all the part of, all the modules of the pension solution projects.
And we included all of that information in the slides for you, just because as we said last time, to the extent that there are further challenges to the project, they will most likely come as a result of what we learned during testing. So you will continue to hear more about testing as we move along. Here you see some of our ongoing challenges, along with mitigation activities. I don't need to read the slide for you. I will just draw your attention to that scope and budget pressures from the second functional rollout and the testing activities, as well as the functional rollout three fit gap activities. So one of the positive things we have to report is that we have concluded negotiations around a scope determination process. So this helps us to clarify whether something happens as a result of the fit gap activities or testing, and there's some kind of, you know, dispute between us and CGI in terms of who's responsible, or is it new scope. We have a process that we mutually agreed to where we can, that will help us facilitate moving through that disagreement. And as well, we have completed a pre-change request review process that we have implemented so that we can apply the most rigorous scrutiny and rigor to any kind of change request that comes out of either testing or fit gap activities. Also, we continue to work on providing you with metrics. Didn't include them in the PowerPoint. They are in your written item. And so we'll continue to work with our independent verification and validation, as well as IPAC consultants to further refine and enhance our metrics, moving toward the predictive metrics that you've heard Graham and his team discuss. So next steps, we are continuing to adjust key project leadership roles and resources, reflecting our concluded negotiations with CGI. And as you met Prashant Metall, our new project director, he's continuing to conduct a full assessment of where we're at and what we need going forward. And we're making the adjustments and bringing on additional resources as necessary. At this point, before we hand over to Graham, we're happy to answer any questions.
So I have one question before we go, and it's going back to the training. And I know we're going to be training on different modalities, computer-based, and then some webinars, and then in-person. I would encourage us to, as we move through this, I would encourage us perhaps to, in consultation with Brian's legal team. And I don't want to be too cryptic, but I want to, I don't want to be too revealing either, I guess. The appeals committee has had some cases come before us in which county office personnel are viewed in a manner that we don't necessarily view county office personnel. And so I want to make sure that once we start that training, then we're going to concentrate the in-person training on those county office reporters, that districts don't try to take advantage of the county office personnel to do the district training. I want that training to be through us, and if we can't do it through in-person, we do it through the webinars or whatever, but that we impress upon the people that we do in training with, the in-person training with, that just because they get their in-person training from us doesn't mean that that reflects for them to do training of other personnel. And I think, so Brian, you understand what I'm asking, right? All righty. So if, if we can take a look at that and how we assure that, I don't know if that's through having them sign something or whatever, that, but we take care of all our Ps and Qs, dot our Is and cross our Ts on that, so we don't have issues arising from this training in the future.
Yeah, so we are looking at training, as well as the change management about it.
All right, super. I don't have anyone else in line? Is there, come on forward. Yeah.
Okay, so I have two questions real quick. So are there any costs of this pension solution projects to the employers?
Because I'm representing LAUSD, so that's, you know, bargaining and everything else. We don't want them to use that as an excuse not to do justice to us. So can you just give me a simple number? If only, if only, yeah, exactly. If it was only that easy.
We do know that there will be some costs associated with it. That's what the assessments will help reveal.
So we don't have any idea yet. But it's not so much that we will charge them to use our product. Right. It's what they will have to spend to implement the product. Correct. That's what I figured. So there is some cost. And then also too, are there provisions to have our employer report the earnings of retirees who are subbing?
Yes. That is data that we will collect. We currently collect and will have enhanced reporting in the new file format for that specific purpose.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Graham?
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Guess my slides are picking up while they're loading. From our perspective, the last month to six weeks has been a pretty productive one for the project. So, I mean, hit the high points. Yeah, so project's on schedule, project is on budget. The major areas we talked about in September around scope, and I think Andrew and Ashish have touched on them already, but the upcoming, as it was in September, October 26th demonstration, where we were interested to see how that would go and whether there would be any additional or significant gaps identified in the functionality. And then the other item that we'd been bringing attention to was, it would be referred to as guiding principles at that point, but the scope determination process. So CGI and CalSTRS had a formal mechanism to resolve any disputes around, or questions around what was in scope and what wasn't. So, you know, we're happy to report that, from our perspective as well, the October demonstration went well. I think the benefits that Andrew laid out around the point of doing the demonstrations in terms of increased confidence, you know, in the system, getting an early leap on testing, particularly using real data that's converted from the existing system, and then validating the design just to show that there hasn't been some gaps that have crept in between the design session and the development of the software. All of those, I think, are proven to be, proven to come about. So I think the demonstrations are proving their worth to this point. And I would say that the second demonstration more so even than the first. So I'm looking forward to the third now to see how the, you know, the success continues. And then in terms of the guiding principles around scope determination, we're happy that that's been resolved, and we have an agreed process now. So while nothing's turned up from the demonstrations, we would have to expect that at some point during the testing process, if not before, something will occur that will require a conversation between CalSTRS and CGI. And having that process in place is going to, I think, make that a more productive conversation. So based on that, I mean, those were the, really the only things that were preventing us, having the scope area of the project rated as green last time. So barring some surprise, we would anticipate upgrading that area to green in our next report. So that will leave the only area that isn't green around resources. And there, I think we've got some conversations we're still having with the project around the level of information and data they have on actual resource utilization versus planned. And then, as I think Andrew mentioned, Prashant, the project director, is doing a full review of the project organization chart. And we're looking forward to having that conversation, we're already having that conversation with him, to understand, you know, where there might be gaps, what might need to be done to have the project really, you know, concretely and fully staffed for the rest of the project. So that'll be, I think, probably a topic for the next board item. Any questions on that piece before I move on to the next? Okay. So one thing I did wanted to spend a minute talking about was testing. And, you know, as Ashish and Andrew had mentioned, you know, testing is now becoming, you know, one of the largest areas of activity for the project. And I wanted to just give a few thoughts around testing, just to give you some context as we're heading into this major and very important piece for the project. The first thing, just from a background perspective, I want to remind people is that the kind of testing that's happening on this kind of system cannot prove that the system is 100% defect-free. That's not the point of testing. So you cannot prove, the testing that's happening on this project will not prove that the system is 100% defect-free before it goes into production. The intent is to catch every possible defect that it can, but it's impossible, it's practically impossible to prove that there are no defects. You know, there are actually some systems that are designed and tested in that manner, I think, like the control systems for nuclear power stations, for example, or autopilot for airlines. But you can imagine the level of time and effort associated with this, it's sort of immense. So on these kind of business systems, the balance we're trying to come up with is rigorous and extensive enough testing to catch all the defects that are necessary to have a, you know, a successful launch into production, but recognizing you're probably not going to catch everything. And so just realize that, that, you know, that the testing effort is designed to catch everything that's going to have a significant impact on production operations, but there are going to be things that happen post-go-live that will not get caught in testing. It's inevitable. And that's why we have warranty periods and the contract, and there's things to manage behind us. I just want to give that as a little bit of a caution, right? So you don't think the testing is this effort that is going to catch absolutely everything? It won't. It should catch almost everything, and certainly everything that would have a significant impact on production operations. The other points I want to make are really just around experience, around best practices. And most of these are somewhat obvious, but you might be, or might not be surprised at how often these things happen on projects. The first piece being cutting the testing effort in order to address scheduled delays. You know, it seems clear that that wouldn't be a good idea, but it happens again and again and again, and it's something to watch out for. The second piece is one that I think is particularly important around using real converted data for testing. What often happens on projects in the early days of testing, when they're testing just individual pieces of functionality, the project team will construct data that executes all the logic paths and all the different alternatives that come out during a business function, and that's appropriate. But when you actually get to testing the project as an end-to-end function or an end-to-end business process, you always want to see what's really in the data, not what you think will be in the data. And inevitably, there are always surprises. No matter how successful a conversion effort, stuff will get into the system that nobody had any idea was there. And you want to see that in testing. You don't want to see it for the first time in production. So that is something, again, that, you know, I think the project is doing a good job on that to date, but it's very much is a key success factor. The third item around business process focus, I think, is also worth discussing. Sometimes it can be easy just to test the system for what the system does and forget that the only reason the system is there is to support an end-to-end business process. So we think it's particularly important when testing is being planned, as well as testing's being executed, both at the, what's called the contractor acceptance testing, as well especially at user acceptance testing, that's what's being tested is the end-to-end business processes, which all, and all the things that happen in those business processes, including, you know, user role setup and the data that's going to be there, and some elements of the process that may not be directly in the system, but may touch the system. And that end-to-end process focus, we think has a, it's a big determinant of how smoothly the go-live goes. And I think that's something that actually, just in recent weeks, there's a fair amount of activity in the project, thinking about this end-to-end process perspective and how to tie that into the testing process. And then the last item is having objective criteria for entering and exiting each phase of testing. There's an enormous amount of pressure on the project team when they, going into these stage gates to say, okay, are we ready to go? Are we ready to go? There's a lot riding on it. The schedule says we have to move on. And having something that you've agreed on in advance as the criteria is really important. It doesn't mean you have to follow the, by the letter, but it does mean you have to discuss each of those items and make a reasoned, transparent decision about why you want to move ahead or why you feel you're not ready to move ahead. So again, that's another area, again, the project is doing that, but it's really important to look at those criteria, to assess whether they're, you know, that they're objective, they're not subject to too much subjective opinion, and whether they're appropriate for that, for moving into that next stage gates. So there are a few items that we wanted to bring your attention to, that we'll be looking at as the project is moving forward, and as we start getting into, more seriously into the testing execution, you can expect to see us commenting on some of this, just to affirm that the project is in fact addressing these areas. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Karen?
Thanks, Graham. Going back to your second point about using real converted data, I know we saw that in the demonstration, but can you kind of explain what that meant? We actually saw a real members' information, but it was scrambled, correct? And then, and that's what you mean by using that in your testing?
Yes, so it's taking real data from start, going through the conversion process that you would anticipate it would go through when the system goes live, and using that data in the, in this case, the demonstrations, but then also in the testing, for the demonstration purposes, that it was de-identified, so you couldn't see the individual person. But all of the other data about their particular, you know, unique business circumstances was real. And so if there had been things that had, you know, unusual things that might have come up that have caused the logic that... up that have caused the logic that the people who designed the system, they thought it would work, but when you see the real data, maybe it does and maybe it doesn't. And the only way to know for sure is to look at that real data.
Great, thank you.
So, these all are the points, is already, we are looking into it and already check-mark in there? I think what Graham pointed is, these are, when pressure comes, people just say, cutting the testing, let's move forward. So, I think that's the point.
Alrighty. Anybody else? Cassandra, you had a comment.
I just wanted to comment a little bit further about the demonstrations and the value that we're seeing from that, and really to give credit to the board for us getting to the position on why we're doing the demonstrations, because it was your, it was your voice that said, we want, you know, we're changing the schedule, we want to have proof that what we're getting in the meantime is actually something tangible and that we have some, can touch, see, and look, you know, feel it. And, you know, Harry was really pushed on this item, and so we went back and had these conversations, and a lot of times it's like, what is going to satisfy Harry's question? And how are we going to prove that? And that's what really drove us to get these demonstrations constructed in the manner in which we have done, and we have seen so much value from that, more so than what we even thought. So, you guys should take credit for this, I appreciate that.
Very good, thank you. Woo-hoo, good job.
Good job, Harry.
Alrighty. I don't have anyone else in line? Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Alrighty. Jack, you said you can do your report in five minutes?
It was like, made that tune, I liked that. One of my favorite shows.
And then, that way, we can go to lunch at 11:30, do our cybersecurity, which is going to be about a half an hour, and then come back and have lunch, and then come back into open session about 12:45.
Yeah, so Graham, you'll tell the state all there's right time certain, and, yeah, to get them so they're here.
Alright.
Good.
See you, Jack.
Great. So, and I just want to point out three things on the executive report. One is just your calendar. You know, we noted that your January, February meeting isn't as long as this one for sure, although Chris indicated yesterday he has a little bit more than he first thought. You know, this was three full days. As we timed out, we're always going ahead and looking at your agendas and timing them out. Right now, at least a little more like a day and a half, day and three quarters, not as long as this one for the next meeting. But your current calendar only goes through June, and when you last adopted your calendar. So, I'm hoping you'll give us some feedback. You've played with lots of approaches to the calendar over time, and some things work and some things don't work. But I think, given how busy everyone tries to schedule out their calendar, it's good to try and get ahead of a year out, not wait to a month before it's effective. So, we have no date scheduled yet for July, and that's when we would start the next year. So, I think, I think it'd be good if you start thinking about this seriously at the next meeting, or the very latest, the meeting after that. That would be my suggestion.
And Jack, we're going to talk about that in the self-evaluation tomorrow? Like, some parameters, how many meetings offsite, that kind of stuff?
And I'm not sure all the board members know, one of our most famous employees, Tom Barrett, who's been a key part of our work culture here and what he does in work. Tom, you're back there, Tom, please. Tom is our ombudsman, and this is the report we provided you. And Tom and his staff are really a one-stop customer service center. As you saw, the data that we provided you, they're handling over 300 inquiries. And, you know, I think, you know, like any good government agency, we're a very transparent operation. There's more than enough opportunity to grieve, appeal, go before the appeals committee. We have all those structured processes that you would expect a government agency to have. But it is important to have an ombudsman as well for a side outlet into that. And sure enough, our members have found that to be a very important channel. And I think the important thing is, it isn't just solving problems, but just like a good audit process, there's lessons you learn from those things. And then, because Tom is, knows us so well, all the branches, has such good relationships with all the managers, he's able to give them feedback on business process where we're not, where we might not be serving members well. So, it's more than just solving a complaint for us, how we kind of view the ombudsman function. So, hopefully, you all get to meet Tom over time, and as I said, he's been a very important part of what we do here in the organization. And Ben, how long, how long you been in this role, Tom?
In this role, 17 years.
17 years as our ombudsman. It's amazing. And because these jobs are tough, you're hearing always problems, problems. And so, that, I, it's amazing, Tom. Is there anything you want to say there?
No. Jack, you only have five minutes.
Exactly. Exactly, thank you. That's exactly what I want to hear.
Good job.
And then, the last thing on the thing, I just want to share with you, I really think we need to hunker down on research on millennials, I really do. I shared with you just a snippet of research from FINRA. If you don't know FINRA, they're one of the regulatory bodies in the United States over the broker-dealer community. They have a foundation that's working on millennial, millennials and how they think about financial issues, since that's the lifeblood potentially for broker-dealer work. And so, they care about it. And so, I shared you some of the insights from them, but there's more and more studies coming out from different angles. It isn't just the FINRA research that I shared with you. And I want to make sure you know, we are doing our own research. I'm just going to finish this off with a couple of points that are going to scare you, because these are from focus group.
That's scary.
Yeah, well, this is from focus groups that we just did, literally, a couple of weeks ago with our own members. So, this isn't academic research, this is teachers of CalSTRS. And we're focusing on millennials and how they're thinking about CalSTRS and retirement. So, I'll just share you two data points from that, we'll end for lunch. So, we asked the participants in our focus group, if they had a hypothetical $500 raise in their monthly salary as a teacher, and they were asked to allocate that among, a list among various spending options. That could be debt payment, savings and investment options, and various things. How would you allocate those dollars? Debt payments were the most common allocation for the extra money, followed by that were significant amounts of money that were allocated towards the perceived needs of the family, college funds, medical expenses, vacations, home improvements. Last, you know what's coming. Last, retirement investments were typically not funded with the $500, or they received a relatively small allocation, or was left. Last consideration in the allocation. And then, I love this phrase that came out of the theme, that came out of some of the discussions with the millennials. Plan for the future, live for today. So, you'll have.
You want to know what Karen and I said?
So, there we go. So, I think that, you know, when you see some of the developments in, again, which I said to you before, in fintech, and how money is being handled, how millennials see money, there is a whole different future that awaits us here, and we've got to really think about this and get ahead of it. We got to do some of that dreaming and thinking about those things, and not just also work on the day-to-day things. Okay.
Thank you, Jack. I think this is really important information. I think everybody's trying to figure out, you know, what the next generation is going to look like. But I'm also interested, or just want to ask if there's also assessment in terms of the, sort of, their first generation or second generation, and how they react to financial institutions, because I think that would be important in this particular cohort.
I'm not sure we've thought about that, actually.
Because I think, I think that makes a difference.
Yeah.
We still are a country of immigrants, especially in this state, and so, where we come from and who we are makes a big difference in our financial.
Absolutely. Look. Appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah.
Thanks, Nora. Paul?
Thank you. So, I mean, that's really interesting information, and also what was in your written report. But to how, how do you propose that we would do some research on this? I mean, what the, what you just mentioned, that statistic, is that because they have great confidence in their CalSTRS pension, and so, they don't need to put any more money aside? Or is it because they really just, they've just got compared to generations earlier, they've got student loan debt, and all sorts of other things that are, and the high cost of housing, and so, it's just more difficult? In other words, what's driving that?
What are the drivers?
And how are we going to find that? How are we going to research that?
That one lines, that, that last point I made lines up very well with other research I've read, where people generally think about money in a chronological sense of their life. And they have, I have a slide that I use in every speech that shows, the most money you need, which is retirement, is the last thing you think about, because you think chronology, in a chronology of getting through college, starting a family, having a baby, buying a home. Oh, I'm 45 years old, I might retire, I'm going to have to retire, I got to save for retirement. So, it is, in fact, you know, I think that one is this, and Sandy's behind me here, that we're using this research in the short range to inform how we communicate with the millennials and our teachers. Clearly, there are some very, I, maybe we should come back with you and the details to some of this focus research, but they have some very clear communication asks around how they can better learn about money from us. And it is changing how people think and learn, and how we develop our materials. So, we've got some real practical, specifics things that we can do differently with this generation than we did before, for sure. But also, I think there's room ultimately, in the bigger sense, for product development, how we think about what are the products that appeal, and how we talk about. Not everybody was with us with Laura Carstensen from Stanford, but they're, they're continuing their research, fascinating research at Stanford about, about changing, they don't, not even using this word retire anymore. Think about, think radically about what we do here. Maybe we really can make some major changes, how we talk about what we do here, that in fact, get people more committed to what we do. So, I'm, I'm trying to stay involved personally with the Stanford research and what they're doing there. And I think there's just a huge opportunity for us with this next generation. As a baby boomer, I still want to get into this with the millennials, figure this out so that we can be successful with them. But, you know, there's a practical side and a product development side and a marketing side to it, in what we do.
Jack, go ahead, Paul.
Just along those lines of products, I mean, we've had Ashby Monk come here and speak to our investment committee. Well, one of the other things that Ashby does is he started a company that basically says, if you deposit money with us, we're going to hold a lottery. And for every dollar that you, that you put into your savings account with us, you basically have a lottery ticket, and then people win something. And so, it's a, it's an encouragement for people to deposit money.
Savings by bribery.
Well, whatever, you know, it's feeling.
It works in the classroom.
You got to figure out how to incentivize people to do it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's kind of a startup.
Absolutely.
But, I mean, I think those, those, thinking about how to incentivize people. But I do think the research has to, has to sort of say, what is different about this, this generation? Because I think the chronological considerations that you identified have, I mean, they've, they applied to our generation too. So, what's different about this group, and how do we motivate, motivate them to think about that?
Well, and I think what's different here also is, you know, there's no doubt, like a lot of industries, there's a lot of parochial thinking that constrains you from addressing these changes in the, in these generations. And like all the other industry sectors that have been disrupted, we have a lot of technologists that have now formed financial services companies. And you go down the resumes of some of these people, and no one's worked in financial services. It's fascinating. I've gone through the bios of these individuals and companies, and they're, they are hardcore technologists that see, they can, again, break these paradigms with millennials and come up with innovative product development.
So, Jack, I.
I know, five minutes are up.
No, no, no. I think the, learning more about the millennials, I think that's absolutely critical. But you and I've already had a conversation that the retirement living situation of, say, past baby boomers, and even late baby boomers, is a whole lot different than earlier baby boomers. And so, I mean, it might be worthwhile, you already know I want to take a look at that also, so we can play with some generational stuff. I think it would be, I think it's, not only is it fascinating, but it's very pertinent to what we do as an organization. Alrighty. Sharon?
So, I was going to say, can we do something maybe on benefits and services? Andrew, you're right there? So, maybe we can, this, you guys know I love this stuff. And, but I was thinking, you know, we have a big benefits conference in LA that, Jack, you've spoken at, and Chris has spoken at before, and we've always called it like a retirement and health benefits conference. And last year, I said, we need to change the name, because anyone under 50 won't come if it's a retirement conference. And so, we called it like a financial literacy and awareness conference, or, and we had the most attendees ever at this fall conference. We had like 400 faculty come, and we had a lot more younger faculty. And so, I do think kind of, I just think a lot of younger people don't think about retirement. I mean, I think about my life, and I even think, you know, people don't retire the way they used to, and retire sounds like you're kind of reclining, or you're old, or you're just stopping.
You're going to die.
Doing, you know, and I think for most people, they're thinking about, what's the next career, right? Or what's the next adventure? Or, I'm going to go overseas and serve, you know, serve in Peace Corps, or whatever it is. And so, I do think, I would love for us to look more at sort of how we kind of rebrand for, for younger folks within our system. But I also think technology is a huge piece. And then, student debt is something we haven't talked about a lot, but I know AFT, and I assume NEA, and we've done a lot of research on student debt and the impact on folks, you know, younger people's disposable income. And that's a huge challenge for, for folks in terms of having money to put away for retirement. So, I'd love for us to kind of look at that impact too, so.
Well, you could have been reading my notes with what you just said. We actually asked the member, the focus group members, how they felt about those words, retirement planning. The older members of the focus group identified with the term, recognized its meaning. The younger groups said, I'm reading the notes from the focus group organizer, the term was acceptable, but not motivational to them.
It's getting more motivational the older I get though, believe me. Alrighty.
Thanks, Jack.
Thanks, Jack. Alrighty. So, let's go ahead and move into closed session. I think that we will probably now come back at 1:00 for open session. 1:00?